Yep.
It's Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. It is 7:30. It's the Warren Township High School, District 121 School Board Meeting. As we start off all our meetings, if everyone could please rise, face the flag and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to it?
I do not.
If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thanks very much. Next up on the agenda is my favorite part of any board meeting, recognitions.
All right, so we have a lot of celebrations and recognitions tonight, and I think we're going to start off with some wrestlers. So I think we've got at least one coach who could come up and introduce our two wrestlers that were celebrated. Let's have the wrestlers come up as well.
Come on, guys. We won't hurt you.
Woo!
Yeah, exactly. Great.
Outstanding.
So just real quick, here's just kind of an overview of the year for Aaron. Aaron waved, so everybody knows which one you are. Let's see, Aaron's a sophomore. We've got a couple of his achievements for the year, and then the one on the bottom here that we're especially recognizing, the state champion. And then Caleb, you want to wave, so everybody knows who you are. He's a freshman with his weight class there, some of his accomplishments for the year. And then again at the bottom, state championship. I do have, when students come to get recognized, we have little W pins. I'll come up and give you one of these.
So Caleb, how you doing? Good. I have a question for you. Can you do that backflip to a roundoff to a handspring thing you did right after you won the state tournament? Just kidding. I don't know if anybody saw that on Instagram, but he was running around the mat. He was so damn happy. I mean, it was, it was just, it was a great thing to see. And my real question is, do you think you can still wrestle 103 next year? Yeah, like I said, you gotta go up at some point, for sure. Yeah, cool. Aaron, great job, man. Great job.
Aaron Caleb, fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Also, I know they got some family here, so just wanted to recognize and thank them for their support. All right, we've got Mr. Tribley, I think, is going to come up and do some ILMEA recognitions. I'm going to just hand the floor over to him. There's a clicker up there. You could talk through it at your own pace.
First of all, thank you for having us out. My name is Dave Tribley. I'm one of our representatives. So we are just going to recognize our students that made all district first in ILMEA. It's not as obvious as like who's a sectional or state champion. So for all district, that's a map of Illinois. Obviously, District 7 is a district we are in. It's kind of Lake and McHenry and Northern Cook County. Students they rehearse in one day and actually quite the honor. We are in a very competitive district. There's a lot of high schools in our district that have very good music programs. First off, we had, so there's a band that's created with this audition process, an orchestra, and then there's four jazz bands and potentially a combo that get created. And so first off, our students that made the traditional concert band, we had and Junior Kelsey Muggins. Those students, again, participated in this festival that was held in the Then in the jazz program, we had seven students selected. First, Noah Brown Jr. in Jazz Band One. Griffin Fox again in Jazz Band Audrey Growth on String Bass in Jazz Band One. Three students selected in that top jazz band. That's a tough thing to do. Nora Lacy in Jazz Band Three on Trombone. Tonya in One, and then the next week, or two weeks later, Trombone, another, so quite the accomplishment. Giang Cabeau on Bass Trombone, Jazz Band Four. Patrick Francisco, Jazz Band Four, on Baby Saxophone. And Vicky Suarez, Jazz Band Four on Jazz Guitar. So point number Then in the orchestra, we don't have an orchestra program here at Warren, but every orchestra needs wind players. And so some of the top wind players get selected for the orchestra. And we have Madison Tolbert on flute, junior. And then in choir, Andrew Shilling, who also made it as a tenor last year, made it as a bass this year for the So students that make all district then have the chance to make all state. If they're placed high enough in those bands, then they can re-audition and Our three students were Griffin Fox on Jazz Bass Trombone, circled there. You can see, it's kind of, it's a large stage. That concert at the hall was just packed. And that actually makes, no hyperbole, the best jazz bass trombone player in the state of Illinois.
Hey, yeah.
He also played drums in our jazz band. It's a long story. We'll say it later. Nora Lacy, senior on euphonium as well, circled there. You can see, this is a very large ensemble, but it's literally students from all around the state. So again, quite the accomplishment for all. Then last but not least, Madison Tolbert, junior, who also made it last year playing flute in the same group.
Nice job.
So all of our ILMEA participants and selectees, again,
Love it. Outstanding, guys.
And thank you to the families and parents. I know that's a lot of effort on your end as well. All right, I think we've got theater next. Does that sound right?
Thank you for having us out. I am Adam Miller, Director of Warren Theater, and I want to, I have two different groups of students to kind of acknowledge tonight. The first are two students who were selected to be in the all-state production. This is put on by the Illinois Theater Association, the Illinois High School Theater Festival. And what they do for this is students audition to be in the cast or in the crew of the all-state play or musical that is done at that festival for over 4,000 students. They rehearse for four weekends, and then they have a tech week. And it is the most impossible production to put on, just in terms of the squeezing all of that rehearsal into such a little bit of time with all of these students from across the state. And we had Lindsay and Nasa, who were involved in the production. Lindsay was in the cast, and she was also the understudy for Farrah. And that is a picture of her taking her bows at the end of the show. And then Nasa was on crew, and it's hard to get good crew pictures because if they're doing their jobs right, they're hidden backstage. So there she is, up in the booth. She was on video and projections crew and helped put together a really wonderful behind-the-scenes documentary of the production. So we're super proud of them for being some of the best actors, or among the best actors and technicians in the state. So congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies.
Go far, because I'm going to call up, the next group I want to acknowledge, our Shakespeare Slam team. And we have a bunch of members from that. The Shakespeare Slam is a competition put on every year by the Chicago Shakespeare Theater. And there's two parts of the competition. There's the scene round, where you take a scene from Shakespeare and perform it. And then there's the dream round, where all of the schools in the area are given the same play, and you use text from that play to inspire your own scene. This year's play was Romeo and Juliet. And our team did an incredible job at meeting the slam goals, which are to be seen, to be heard, to be creative, to take risks, and most importantly, to play as an ensemble. And at the finals at Chicago Shakespeare Theater, our slam team took home that ensemble award. And the team is Elena Munt, Andrew Hickey, Claire Vaniznik, Gracie Cortez, Lawrence Romaton, Lindsay McCormick, Nate Abrego, Nasa Rangai, Tricia Suter, and Taz DeVries. So congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
All right, I think we're moving on to the next step, next group, which is our Tech Academy students.
I'm Jamie Zabin. I think I was here this time last year. We have, had one student last year. We're up to four. So I'm the lead teacher for the business department. And just as a reminder, Tech Academy is, our classes that we offer that have to do with Microsoft Office. Students have the opportunity to earn a variety of certifications. So all four of these students are being honored tonight for their success with Microsoft Word. When they take their exams, they're entered into a competition, and based on their scores, some of it has to do with how fast they also complete it. They get matched up against other individuals, could be even college students in the state of Illinois that are also taking the exam. So we had four students placed in the top 10 for the first semester this school year. Senior Elena Munt had fourth place. Claire Vaniznik had seventh place, also a senior. Sandro Barcenas had eighth place, also a senior. And then the fourth student was Clement Bedwell, freshman, at 10th place. So what this allows for them is an awesome recognition and quite an accomplishment. They're also invited to the national event that's in Florida in June, which we've had over the course of the past, you know, history of this class. I think only two students actually take up on that opportunity. But it's well deserved, and we just would like to acknowledge their success.
Good job. Good job.
Great job, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then last, the last part of our recognition here, I don't know if we've got any students here specifically for this. We have a video for our national letter of intent signers, but if there are any students here that are in the video, please come up and we'll chat with you after the end. Traditionally, though, we've got a little video here that highlights them, so I'm going to play that here briefly. I think, I want to check with my team, but I think that's, that's all the student recognitions that we've got. We have a lot, though, so if I missed something, and somebody can tell me that, let me know. Otherwise, I think we're good. For the students and families that are here, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. People don't always necessarily want to do that.
We're lots of fun, I tell you.
Our feelings will not be hurt, in the least, if you go home and, you know, do chores or homework or something like that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank all of you, all your students and all the parents. Thank you very much.
If there's a tornado outside, let us know.
Visitors.
Winds were going off.
Yeah, we were in a warning.
Yeah, we're in a warning. I just got a
We were, yeah. Oh, we still are, yeah.
Warning or what?
No, warning.
Did you check the book, Paul?
What's that?
The sign-in book?
No, there's nobody left.
The guy behind the flag.
I will go look. There isn't.
No, Woods asked him. It's fine.
Good. Next up on the agenda is the time for public comment. It's the time, if anybody would like to address the board, you're more than welcome to. I got the thumbs up, nobody signed in the book, but does not preclude anybody else from addressing the board if you'd like to. Just going to move along. Next up is committee reports. Anything you want to add to the committee reports, standing?
No, sir.
Ronda, the superintendent's reports, then.
I don't have anything specific to add here unless the board has any questions or comments or would like to discuss any of the reports that I included. Otherwise, we do have a presentation from Student Services, but any questions that the board has or discussion, we can address those now. I do want to recognize Jacob, who's here as our student representative. Our other student
Jacob's back.
Our other student was not able to come because of the weather.
I don't want to be here because of the weather.
You're a trooper.
If there's no questions from the board, you want to go on to the department report?
Yeah, well, we're going to ask a couple of our senior leaders here to come up and walk through our Student Services report for the year. There's a clicker up there, guys, for you to go through at your pace.
Good evening. Just a highlight, we're up seven at half, so we're doing well.
Important stuff.
All right, Student Services. We tried splitting this up amongst the three of us, trying to go over some of the things we're doing more strictly in Student Services rather than some other areas we work. The outcomes for tonight, just, I think you have an understanding of our staffing model, that you were, you know, so gracious enough to add to Student Services with the referendum, but just to make sure you understand that staffing model. Panoramas of software, again, that the board has graciously, you know, put into the budget that we have, that we're able to access, making sure you understand how we're using that to help kids. And then introduce plans on how we are potentially going to assess what we're doing, to see if it is working. So this is the, this is the problem. I'm going to try to summarize what we do in Student Services when you're looking at different groups of kids. So in schools, you look at tier one, tier two, and tier three. A tier one program is something we do for all kids. It would be like the Warren Way's a tier one program. Something we promote with our kids, about respect and resiliency and so on and so forth. And then tier two are, is kind of interventions we put in place when the tier one intervention isn't working. So now we have to do something different for that group of kids, kind of in a smaller group. And then there's a tier three, which kids who weren't successful in the tier two, our interventions, what we're trying to do there, isn't working, then a kid moves into tier three. If you want to kind of put that in percentages, typically schools look like 80 to 85% of kids are in tier one, 5 to 15-ish are in tier two, and zero to five are in tier three. So when you're looking at these slides, this is panorama grading us in these four areas. Academics, that's just straight grades. Attendance, which is, your attendance is, behavior, how many infractions have you had in the dean's office? An SEL is a survey they take twice a year. And that survey is looking to assess them and how they're feeling with different areas in social, emotional learning. So when you're looking at the green or light green, that's good. Those are kids that are getting what they need, they're not having problems, they're okay. When you get into the yellow, that's more tier two, you think about it that way. And then red, hey, that's tier three, that's kid who is struggling. So in academics, when you're looking at those, what does that mean? Well, and red is those kids have one F. So the day we took this snapshot, I don't know what day we took this snapshot. Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, 20% of the kids had at least one F. They could have all As and one F. They probably didn't have all As and one F, but they have one F, that's how they're targeted in that. The yellow is they had one D, A, Bs, and Cs, and at least one D. And the light green, one C, and the dark green is all As and Bs. Does that help you kind of follow this chart, kind of what the problem is? And this is how we look at Student Services. How do we attack the yellow and the red? The problem is, I wish we could say we're attacking all of the red and all the yellow. When you put real numbers behind that, that becomes, it becomes challenging. So obviously, we prioritize the tier threes. And then we move in and try to grab as many tier twos as we can. Move into the yellow and try to grab as many of those kids as we can. Yes, sir?
My understanding, is it, um, just kind of straight power school Fs? Or is there teacher input provided to? Because I, I'm always, um, I always, as a parent, I'm leery of grades at the beginning of a term. And the reason for that is there's not enough data to really, uh, there's just not enough submitted to really know and have a complete picture of how a student's doing. Wasn't sure if it was in the same boat, like you want early intervention, but, uh, and on another hand, maybe there's just not enough there to know how the student's doing. I wasn't sure, um, given how many students we have, it's likely it was just straight up out of power school, but.
It is, it's, every night it updates, right, Tony? So that, that academic slide is going to change.
Yeah.
It could change every day, the percentages.
Right, right.
You know, so we're not, like, with that one, yeah, you want to look at the kids who are failing, like, they're on my radar, but I'm also looking at their past grades too. So that is a great question because you're absolutely right, particularly early on.
It helps me understand.
You don't do one, do well on one test, you could have an F. You're not going to end up with an F, but, so that's a good point, thank you.
So could you take like a week's worth of data and then compile it to the average?
No, this change, this screen would change every day. Because you're looking at the overview and pulling those kids. Now, a kid's screen will change every day too, depending how they do academically. Academics and attendance will change. Behavior doesn't change that much, again, unless the kid's going down to the dean every single day. So those, and the, certainly the SEL one on the far right, that's only going to change twice a year. Because you do the survey twice a year. So that's more of a stagnant number. But that's what makes it tricky in Student Services, right? You know, we're trying to identify as we go along and look at past history. Okay. So just to remind you again of our, how we structure our Student Service teams. Again, thankfully with the referendum and the board's support, we certainly added to our Student Service teams. And we restructured how we were handling our Student Service teams. In the past, we had three teams at each school, and a dean led each one of those teams. The big problem we had with that, deans are extremely busy. They have a lot of different responsibility. I don't want you to think busy because we have all these discipline problems. They have a lot of tasks on their plate every day. Their, their very busy office with attendance and tardies and all kinds of being in the hallway and doing a lot of different things. So as a result, those weekly meetings could get canceled. And they weren't as efficient. With the additional psychologists, we had a shift where we made the psychologist to lead the SST teams and the dean become more of a co-facilitator. That way, we were running those meetings consistently and efficiently every week. So that was a big help, I think that was a significant help. And then also deciding to go to two teams. So we brought more people to the table to assess kids. And they brought their skill set to the table as well. Um, and in addition, you see that attendance specialist, that's new. Now that attendance specialist is at the table, particularly talk about attendance problems with kids. Okay, I'm turning it over to Laura, I think.
So for our Student Services teams, we have a certain people being responsible to bring us data so that we can kind of look at the whole picture of the student. Generally speaking, the deans will bring data on attendance or, and/or behavioral issues. Our attendance specialist also helps with that because sometimes they're working more closely with some families. And so they'll chip in as well. Our school counselors generally will bring academic performance. And they'll look at, kind of how Tony said, they'll look at the overall picture rather than just one glimpse of one day. And then our social workers, if there is a social, emotional history, they'll kind of bring that along as well. Our psychologists kind of oversee all of it and can chip in as needed. Our teams meet once every week. We identify students, possibly students that have interventions that have already been attempted. Uh, and they may require some further monitoring or support. Or we might be able to identify students using panorama data trends. We can look at, in panorama, at students who may be declining in grades or having an uptick in behavioral issues. So we use that trend data to kind of identify students. We also address students who are struggling or who have been struggling and are being referred by parents and/or staff. So if staff notice something in the classroom that they're concerned about, they refer it to one of our team members who bring it to our SST teams. And then we always look at each student at the team individually. So we problem solve for that specific student. We have three different ways we monitor our kids in Student Services. And this is broken down into the phrases that we've been using as early monitoring, champion management, and team problem solving. These labels kind of go along with some of the labels used in panorama. So in an early monitoring system, it could be somebody who has been doing well, very consistent, and all of a sudden they drop off. Okay, a school counselor may notice that one F pop up all of a sudden. And that school counselor may be like, oh, I'll just meet with them, I'll see what's going on, but I can do that myself, I don't need to bring it to the team. And so they may use support notes in panorama. That way, if another team member happens to be looking at that kid, they can see, oh, look, the school counselor has met with them. So we may say, called home on grade concerns. We may say just some general note-taking there. If that student, um, as the school counselor is working with them, let's say that student is continuing to decline, they may create their own intervention. So again, it doesn't have to go to the whole team. They may be able to say, you know what, I think this student just needs this little thing, I will take care of that. They'll create an intervention plan in panorama, and that has some specifics, uh, steps along with it. So for example, we may say for four weeks, we're going to have this student go to study table and then check in with me at the end. And the, uh, school counselor will kind of monitor that along the four-week, six-week, eight-week mark. If for some reason that intervention isn't working and the counselor is like, okay, I'm a little stuck, I may need some more help, they'll bring that to the Student Services team. And there, as a collective, we can kind of look at the problem and get some more brains looking at what may be happening and create a collective intervention plan that may have a few more people. The school counselor might still be that touchpoint, that champion, but the social worker might come involved, or the psychologist might come involved. Yes?
I would assume, I shouldn't say that. So if a student goes into the first section there, they just start to drop off, and the counselor meets with that student, and the student obviously has a huge problem going on, they could just jump right over.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wherever the appropriate measures would be taken.
And there may be students that jump right to the Student Services team level.
Okay, thank you.
So in our Student Services teams, we kind of followed this decision-making model. We first try to define the problem, what is happening? What is the problem and the why behind it? Why do we think it might be happening? That kind of helps us to develop a plan that targets a specific thing. So our intervention plans all have a goal. We want this student to be able to have raised their 59 to a 63 by the end of four weeks or by the end of eight weeks. We carry out the intervention, and then we always go back at the end of it, whatever timeframe we put. We go back and we say, how did the student do with this intervention? If the student made progress and reached their goal, we may say, okay, we don't need another intervention plan, they're good right now. We'll take them off the SST radar and we'll still monitor as the individual Student Services member. If the student either didn't, uh, reach the goal or got worse, then we relook at the problem, we say, okay, did we miss something here? What is the why? Maybe we don't have the correct why. And we create another intervention, uh, intervention plan and complete that cycle. And now I think Chuck is going to start talking a little bit about the specifics in panorama.
So we want to show you a little bit about panorama, a few screenshots so you can see what counselors, deans, social workers can put in panorama, what teachers are going to see in panorama. Basically, it's a collection of data like Dr. Keely mentioned, on attendance, behaviors, course performance, and social, emotional well-being. But it also includes that second part. Supports and interventions can be seen and monitored and analyzed by all members of the team. So if a counselor calls home to talk to a parent, they can put a note in panorama that they called home. The teacher can see that. The teacher calls home or meets with a student and has a conversation about, say, attendance, they can put a note in, the counselor and the dean and the social worker can see that as well. So it's not only the data, it's also the communication between, uh, you know, everyone at the building to see what's going on with the student so that we can best intervene for that student, sure.
So is this like a plugin to Power School or it's a whole separate software?
Whole separate software. Every night, it downloads from Power School the attendance and the behavior and the course performance. And then also, um, Student Services is putting notes in to it as well, manually, when they get in there. So yeah, it's a separate, separate program to Power School.
But Power School is auto-delivering to panorama?
Yes.
So the access to panorama, is it just administrators and counselors or all teachers are logging into two software?
We opened it up this semester to all teachers. We took about a year to get used to it in, in Student Services so that we knew what we were doing. And we worked on it, and we made sure we knew how to work with it. And then we opened it up this semester to teachers. And Dr. Kirk and I are going to continue to work with department leads to get teachers more involved in putting in support notes and things. So it becomes part of their routine or habit when they're working with students. Rather than going to a Google Doc and putting in their notes, I called home about this, go to panorama and put it in there.
So it's more of a tracking module?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could look at it that way.
Well, the adoption by the teaching staff is going to be huge.
It's going to be big, yeah.
I mean, because that, you're only getting half the data until they start getting into it.
True.
Right? I mean, because you just won't know.
Right, right. So that's panorama in a nutshell. Again, it provides also personal, the data that we need to look for, this, a direction for initiatives, the school-wide trends, and to assess our programming. So back to this slide that Dr. Kirk mentioned, we just put panorama education in here because we want to just reemphasize that in early monitoring, that middle point, use support notes to document contact, that's in panorama. On that champion management, again, that middle area where it says the champion creates an intervention plan, that intervention plan is in panorama. And lastly, team problem solving, where the intervention plan is crafted collectively by the team, that's in panorama. So throughout this process, we're implementing panorama. All right? Here's what it looks like, uh, Dr. Keely showed this before. He discussed and showed you about the academics, attendance, behavior, SEL. There's also test scores in there. And we're going to show you then what it looks like for a student. So here's a student. This student, you can see the demographic data on the left for each student. You can also see how it breaks down for this particular student. Academics and attendance are in red. So we can research this data on students, we can drill down on students and see which ones are having problems in certain areas. And then hopefully a counselor or a dean or a social worker are going to start to work with this student. So here are some support notes that I mentioned. There's a lot here, but if you look at them on the left, on the bottom, where it says Jim L., 10-4 slash 23 in yellow, the left bottom one, that's the first contact that was put into panorama by Jim Lozaro, our new attendance specialist at the Oak Plain Campus. And he noticed he meant an email was sent home that includes a snippet of her, and there's more down there. I'm guessing it was attendance, because he is our attendance interventionist, right? As you go up, you see Noemi Zepeda, the next one, on 10-10-23. Met with her to discuss her attendance and grades. Noemi is one of our new deans at the Oak Plain Campus. You go up to the next one, Marlene Vargas, 10-12-23. She called home, spoke to mom, set up a meeting with the dean and the counselor. That's our new bilingual counselor at the Oak Plain Campus. So you can see how this progresses throughout the year. You can see everyone who put in a note, and what we want to do is get teachers involved. Teachers would see these, but teachers would also enter these as well so that everyone's in communication in the same area, which is panorama. Okay? So that's how we put notes in. What happens then, at some point, you can put a plan in. This is that champion plan or intervention plan. If you look on the bottom right, you see it says Noemi Z., October 11th, 2023. In October, Noemi, our new dean, put in an intervention plan where the goal has been, she's been struggling to get to school. You can see that part at least on the left there in the middle on the plan. So the intervention goal was to increase attendance for this student. The next one up, you see Jim Lozaro, October 17th. Yep, I met with, during Jim, and to discuss her attendance. So the plan was put in place. Noemi tried this for a number of weeks, right? And you can see at the top more notes that went in just on the plan, which are different than the notes. And then you can see in the top one where there's that red exclamation point, she continues to miss full days of school, SST next step. And that's what we just talked about. Now it comes to the team. The dean tried, the attendance specialist tried, they did some things on their own, they said, this isn't working. We need to bring it to the full team. So then it would go to the full team, like Dr. Kirk mentioned. And on that meeting, everyone who's together in the room would try to develop a plan to help this student out and to increase, increase attendance. Okay?
Yours?
Yeah.
Hand it back to Pat.
Okay, so we just wanted to share really briefly how we're tied to the strategic plan as well in Student Services. So there were two goals for training for staff that we took on. Trauma-informed practices, we spent a lot of time with our staff working on this year and brought in and outside, professional will help us with that as well. And actually, March 4th, we'll, March 4th, right? That's our in-service day. We'll be doing restorative practices with our staff, we're looking forward for that training. And then there's a follow-up training to that in April. Referral GPS, we were looking at, um, this and CARESOLIS for a couple of years, and finances were usually an issue. But again, with the passing of referendum and with, uh, Dr. Weesum was also very interested in this. We had a partnership with the ROE, and I give Dr. Karner a lot of credit, that he got this paid for, for Lake County Schools. So now referral GPS, uh, we do have in our schools and we have access to. And this certainly ties to connecting families to our community resources. And that has been hugely popular, popular with our Student Service staff. I will tell you, when we presented and we got trained on that, I mean, we had a couple of social workers even cry because they were so happy, um, with this new resource.
What does it do?
It essentially is a software that can connect, you can filter it to find doctors and even find people with, whether you have insurance or not, or Medicare or not, and in an, in an area, and can you get the appointment within two weeks? And it's just a really efficient resource. Now, our social workers can help our families, and our families can just use it on their own, not even get us involved. They, they have access to it. So it's super efficient and pretty effective.
So how are you communicating to the families that that's a, that's a program that they have access to?
Yes, I think in the fall, we did.
Yeah, we've done.
Haven't seen it.
Yeah, we did an initial communication out to all families. Most of the, most of the referrals that are coming because of a conversation between the department and the family, the, there'll be some outreach to the department.
Say, hey, like, go to the website and they can, okay.
Yeah. The service does provide also some, like, case management. So they'll provide some support for families, help them make that initial appointment, follow through, see if they're having any issues with paperwork as they get ready for that first appointment.
And again, super helpful, our social workers will call the, and they'll get on together and look through it. Yeah, any filter, whether you want to see a male or female doc, I mean, it, it has everything. It's really, really super powerful. And I think schools are very appreciative, and again, you know, Dr. Karner, we really appreciate his support with that, so.
So let's say a family's, um, dealing with some mental health with a student, with their own kid. Can they call the social worker or the counselor and say, hey, I haven't been able to find a therapist, can you help me find one? And they would be connected to this program?
Yes. Like in the past, social workers know of our community resources. Adam Krieger is awesome at the teen center and with, you know, the township. But he's limited as well as how many appointments he has available. So that's typically what our social workers were doing in the past, and we had a sheet of paper we gave to the parents. This is so much more effective and more, and has a much wider reach.
Nice thing about it is, my understanding, Warren Township Youth and Family Services is short-term. And then they refer you out where, based on what I'm hearing you describe, it's skipping a step. So that family could, as far as the continuum of care, could continue with that therapist doctor and, which is much more advantageous, I would think. Once you build a relationship to be referred again, is, it's, it's great that we have it, but it's, this seems better.
It's a system.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anytime you can put a system in place, it's usually more efficient. And Adam's, I mean, we have an MOU with Adam. He's getting us that, we're getting social workers from the township to provide some services during the school day even to our kids that have signed up because he has no appointments left at night. So our kids that aren't, want to go to the township for that type of level of support, we've worked it out with them where they'll send some of their people over during the day so those kids can get that support when they need it. Yep, they'll do it right here at the school. But as Tony said, he's absolutely right, that's short-term. That's not a long-term. Um, that's not a long-term solution.
Oh, I would also add, I'd clarify, Dr. Keeley, this is specifically for mental health types of support. So if families are looking for community resources in other areas, a resource like Lake County 211, like if I'm struggling with inconsistent housing, for example, uh, referral GPS isn't that type of community resource finder. That would be more of a, like, Lake County 211, uh, system.
Okay, no, sorry. Does someone have a question? Oh, I thought I heard something. Uh, the last thing was just again, student service, uh, staff model was implemented that you guys again so graciously supported us with, with the referendum. So how, where are some areas which we're looking at to assess, hey, we're doing these things, um, we're getting started this year. How do we want to assess? We want to hold ourselves accountable to see what we're doing. Is it working? So certainly Panorama is gonna be a great lever, lever for that. Um, we can look at that trend data in Panorama to see. I think Dr. Weisman is using that for one of his areas. Uh, next year's school-wide, which I'm excited about. Um, implementation of tier one and tier two interventions. Because we didn't have the staff, we did not have a lot of tier one and tier two interventions. Um, and that's what we're kind of focused on this year because we just didn't have the people. Uh, we had ideas, but not the people. So those are things that once we start instituting and when we start getting it into the classroom level, um, and that's the first bullet about increased classroom interactions involving SCL and Panorama. Because for too long, and this happens in a lot of schools, there's silos. You have your teachers and you have student services. Teachers teach, you know, student services send them down if they have, you know, any kind of emotional or behavioral issues. We need to, that silo should encompass both. Because the teacher is seeing that kid every single day. And we gotta have a good communication tool with student services. And we feel like that's what Panorama is providing us. So now we're all playing on the same field and seeing what each other are doing and how we can help each other, particularly when a kid is struggling. Um, attendance rate, we can certainly look at that as, as a factor in our effectiveness. Behavior infraction data, how our restorative practice evaluation goes. I'm pretty optimistic about that. Our failure rates, certainly you can look at that because we spend a lot of time looking at that in student services, obviously. And our graduation rate. So those are some areas that we think we can use to assess us and I'm sure we will come up with more.
Yeah, I mean, you could just take a snapshot at the end of the semester and the end of every year and just see how it looks.
Correct.
Over time, you would get a trend, hopefully positive, but.
Will you guys give us an update, like in June, for example, more towards the end of the school?
Yeah, we can give you an update on anything. Especially now with our, that Panorama, it's easy to share data.
Let, let me ask a question on that. Before Panorama, were we using some type of data dashboard to?
Power School.
So this is our first, uh, data dashboard. Oh, game changer.
I, I shouldn't say that. We did have a data warehouse.
Yeah.
And that was more grade and test-based. So we were pulling stuff out of that, but.
Behavior and social piece. So you were importing test scores.
And the data warehouse is kind of clunky and it was very difficult, like, I think lead teachers were trying to dabble in that and was very hard for them. It wasn't something they used every day.
And you're finding this one to be more user-friendly.
If you saw Pan, like, they really don't even offer training because it's that intuitive, this, you know, I mean, that's how new software is. It's very intuitive to see and get through. We clearly are offering training.
Yeah.
But that software is, it's just very intuitive. And it's not overwhelming for someone to look at and really dig into and get what they need.
And I feel like it's almost understated what this is gonna do for us, the type of data that we're gonna end up, when I say we, I mean you guys, that you're gonna end up being able to.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you're, let's, let's be real. You're doing all the hard work, right? You know, we, we just, but it would, it's gonna be great to see trends. It's gonna be great to see. Um, I'm just like, my mind's racing. It seems like, um, and it's, the issue of being able to use the data in a user-friendly format and even that's huge. Like, we may have already been sitting on the data, but using it is different. That's, that's wonderful to hear.
And if you know Power School, even.
I'm happy for you.
Power School's challenging to even work with. Like, I mean, especially for like teachers, they're not able to pull those data reports and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, and just Panorama is a game changer. Because it's just a lot easier to work with.
Ah, this is, yeah. And I also separate from Panorama, the other thing that I'm excited for you guys about is, as I'm hearing you talk about all the, like, you're almost expanding how people view student services when you're offering all this information, all these programs, because and I don't know about here, so forgive my broad-brush statement, but many times people have viewed it as the gateway to special education.
Correct.
Instead of, and it's so, it can be so much more than that. And I just, I see that definition being broadened. I see the types of discussions and services that can be offered now and, and just dabbling into areas that historically you may not have been dabbling into. So it's, it's, it's great stuff to see because there's all kinds of needs out there, not just.
It's the silos, right? We want to get out of those silos.
Yeah, it's, it's great to see.
And we're working together with the students and we can see the same data and communicate. I don't have to walk down to the guidance office.
Yeah.
I can see what's going on by just getting on Panorama. Oh, I really need to get down there. I gotta meet with this counselor about this kid. So we're very excited about that and it should make a difference.
Dr. Keeley and the, and Chuck and Laura showed, um, kind of an overview of the data. There's multiple levels in there of data. And probably something I know at the board workshop, we talked about increasing the conversations around key indicators and data. And this will be a really good place for the board to say, we need some key indicators from this platform.
Thanks for the legwork and the hard work.
Any questions for us?
Answered my questions. I'm good.
Appreciate you guys very much.
Good stuff.
If not, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda then. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 80 through 87, as posted. There is no Exhibit B for this meeting. Payment of the bills dated February 27, 2024, in the amount of more, $4,720,139.27. Regular meeting minutes and the executive session minutes of February 13th, 24. Six-month review of closed session minutes and the destruction of certain verbatim recordings. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Devanti?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up, under discussion items, we're gonna have a discussion on our 10-year facility projects update.
Yeah, well, Chris is walking up. It looks like we won the basketball game 70 to 56.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So, good evening. Um, the last couple.
Thanks for projecting 10-year projects.
Um, so the last couple of months, we've been talking about the 10-year, um, facility plan. And initially, there was a long 800-item list of projects. Um, we did prioritize those. And now, we are now moving into, um, tying the number of projects that we can do in any given year to, um, our finances. So, um.
I told Chris I would put the slide of the spreadsheet up here and I forgot to do it, Chris. So that's why she's looking at this. Do you want me to try to pull that up real quick?
It, if, I, I mean, as long as everyone can see it on their, uh.
I have it in front of me.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yep, no, that's fine. Um, so when you look at the chart, at the top of the chart, it says Almond Campus, and then it goes across five years. In gray, it shows the total amount to be spent in that year for that campus. Halfway down the page is the O'Plane Campus. In the gray, it shows what's to be pay, uh, spent in that campus over the next five years. And at the very bottom, in blue, the grand total of both campuses' costs per year. So we did squeeze, um, well, I shouldn't say squeeze. Instead of giving 10 years of prioritization and tying it to financials over 10 years, because 10 years is a very long time, um, we did it over five years. Um, because it's hard to predict what's going to happen in six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. So we um, just initially, we're just doing five years. So a couple of things, the cost of the projects do not include architect, engineering fees. Um, these may not be true costs. As stated in earlier discussions, these are estimated costs that may change um, depending on factors that warrant additional investigation to determine the scope of a problem and the cost of mitigating the, of the problem. Some projects might be pushed back if other projects move forward. Um, like if we have a fail of an HVAC system, we may have to move that up and move another project, um, farther out. So all the projects listed are what we classified as Priority One, which addresses life safety, the envelope of the buildings, and mechanicals such as heating, cooling costs, and even toilets flushing. There are no Priority Two projects included, such as ceiling tiles, flooring, replacement of, um, windows. And also wishlist items are not included in, in this chart, um, such as the pool, locker room, auditorium renovations, uh, baseball dugouts. So just critical infrastructure at this point in this chart. Um, in 2029, the almond roof project is estimated to cost 6.17 million. I've asked Chuck Crowley to come back to the campus and reassess the roof's condition and, um, ask him if some of the roof could wait a second year so we don't have to spend $6 million in one year on the roof. Um, he's probably gonna come out by mid-March, I think he said, and he's gonna reassess that. Um, so then we'll split half that cost into 2030. So overall, this is a living document that we will constantly be looking at and, um, updating. David Gregg's team, our facility director, has been working on a number of the items that have been listed, that, um, were listed in the 10-year plan. Um, and once his team has completed something, we take that item off. So he, so far, he has identified there were like 26 items and I can't remember exactly what they were, but they were like $1,000 apiece. And his team took that. And so we took $26,000 off. Um, so they're doing a pretty good job. Um, so the next part is the, um, five-year projection. So on the five-year projection, I did not include, um, the 21 million that is in working cash. Because at some point, we may use portions of that working cash, so I didn't want to include it in the projection because it would kind of skew what the numbers look like. We anticipate spending up to $4 million a year, um, for the, to cover these projects. And these projections are assuming that we spend out our full budget every year, which un, it's unlikely that we've, um, spent out our full budget. There's always money, I shouldn't say that, money left over in the budget. So this is a trend rather than an exact number. The projection includes the annual transfer of money from Fund 20, operations and maintenance, to capital improvements, um, to cover capital projects. So like we did, um, or what we're doing tonight, where we're moving $4 million from O&M um, to cover the roof and other projects. Um, in this projection, we, um, that transfer of $4 million is built into this projection. So I also asked, um, PMA to review our debt capacity. Um, we do have some options in the future, um, to borrow funds, um, to support some of our larger projects. So now that we have the projects identified, prioritized, and tied to annual spending, um, the administration needs direction from the board. If the board would like to review this information and discuss and discuss further, we'll have a meeting next week, uh, March 5th. Um, that is the finance meeting. And if the board would like to move forward with this plan, the administration can direct DLA to format this plan into a binder and it can be presented to the board for approval.
Question?
Yes.
So I'm just making sure I understand how this all flows, but so the athletics at the O'Plane campus is a $649,000 in 2025, which I assume is the turf. But you're putting in 25 because we're probably gonna pay for it after June, June 30th.
I am anticipating, I don't think we have an exact date on that installation, but it'll.
So some of that 25 stuff, we're actually doing right this minute. Or not this minute, but this summer.
Right.
And the, the bill would just fall, like the roofing did before, it fell in the next year, blah, blah, blah. Okay, got it.
Chris, can I ask you, um, talked about Priority One, which is in this document. Priority Two, you mentioned things like ceiling tiles or flooring. How does the district allocate resources to pay for those types of things?
So I'm going to create, um, a budget for those items in the O&M, um, fund for, um, David Gregg to knock off some of those, um, some of those projects. Wouldn't be able to do it all at one time, like the flooring would probably be so many classrooms at a time. Um, not an entire school, but, um, right now I'm, once I'm working into the budget, we'll determine a dollar amount and it'll be noted in, within the budget that those will be for, um, projects.
So generally, you're just looking at like, every year we'll have a, a set amount for those types of, okay, thank you. Sorry.
You're asking, um, I want to make sure I understand. For approval of the $4 million mark, this plan for five years, for the full five years or just one year at a time?
Um, the $4 million will be every year.
Right. So you said you were looking for, uh, approval, direction in a binder, then would get started. That binder would include work for the next year, two years, five years, full five years, you're asking?
Full five years.
So you're asking for a full five-year commitment?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Who's creating these binders?
Um, DLA will put the binders together.
It's hard to commit to a five-year, I mean, you can commit to it, but you could always stop, right?
Right.
Right.
You're saying, our plan is to do this, but if things change.
Yeah, I, I just don't like the fund balance trending in different directions, so. So that's just my hesitation. But I, it just means flexibility is key. So if we need to defer, like we have in the past, um, we have that ability to do so.
Yes.
Uh, that's what I was trying to get at. Are we like year five, are we locked in with whatever we're approving?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Really what you're approving when we bring you this is a plan.
Yep.
You're not formally approving the budget.
I appreciate the plan and I appreciate the priorities and I appreciate everything we asked for, which feels like it's in here and I understood it, so that's nice too.
PMA said there was options for us, which will be in the years to come?
Um, they did dress something for me. I was gonna talk about the, at the finance meeting next week.
I'm not gonna be there.
Okay.
That story for another day.
At this point, there is an option of about 8.9 million that could be accessed, um, in December of 2024. The further we delay that, the more, the more it would grow.
Okay, that's enough. Thank you.
Some things coming up, I would, I would add to supplement what Chris shared with us is uh, we are finalizing, uh, the outside, the third-party projections, uh, with Rob Grossi. Um, and are working on that, which will just help people understand financial situation. And, um, Chris and I and the team have been working with DLA to put together a formal proposal for the locker room, which is, what do we call that? The wishlist? That's on the wishlist?
It's, it's on the wishlist.
Yeah. So we'll, in the coming months, you'll see a plan for that also. It's a separate conversation, but very related. And I'm really gonna push the board at that point to, um, give us specific direction on that for at least, like, are we gonna do this or not? For at least the, you know, at some point here over the next five years, do we want to do this or not do this? If we're not gonna do it, let's just not keep talking about it for at least the next three years. Um, so we know and we can just do our planning. And I'll, I'm gonna push the board also to have a conversation around the swimming pool at the same time. Because the, um, the plans for the locker room impact, uh, the swimming pool conversation. And we wanna, I will eventually say, look, probably the best way to, um, own and control the impact of the swimming. the impact of the swimming pool on the community is to preemptively make some decisions as opposed to waiting until something breaks to reactively make the decision. That's coming down the road, but those are some things I think that are related.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other questions or comments on the facility plan?
Insurance, you want to talk about insurance?
Yeah, so I included for the board to look at, we got some just big-picture projections for both where we're going to end up with insurance increases for next year, which are preliminary, but they give the board an understanding of where we're at. I've been updating the board on what we're doing in terms of looking at pricing and for some other options. We'll keep you posted on that. But we are looking at some significant increases in PPO and HMO. Not as large, but still increase in dental insurance. We received some numbers to look at for high-deductible plans that are included there for the board to review. And I believe the next step in the conversation is to have some conversation around whether the board would be interested in supplementing a health savings account for individuals who move over to a high-deductible plan. Sometimes organizations will do that, especially at the onset of a new offering for a high-deductible plan. And so maybe as a starting point, something the board could consider is, is offering maybe 90% of the savings for an employee-only high-deductible plan, which would be maybe somewhere around $1,200 for that initial first year that an employee is willing to go over to a high-deductible plan. Yeah, I'm not an insurance expert. Other people here at the table might know more about this, but generally, probably to get people to consider a high-deductible plan, oftentimes organizations are supplementing that with a high health savings account contribution.
Nobody goes through, it doesn't help you to have it, that's for sure.
Yeah, my experience has been when you first open, first offer a high-deductible plan, people are very hesitant to move over. And it's worth giving some people an incentive to move over because we can talk to them who are blue in the face about how good the plan is and how helpful it is. It only goes so far, but when your peers have actually moved over to the plan, and they tell you it's a good plan, that's a stronger selling point than the administration telling them that. So it's worth giving in some sort of incentive to people to move over.
Logical, if we offer something, whatever it would be.
Kind of going down these lines, and at one point, we had talked about ways to help reduce our healthcare costs. We had talked about doing a dependent audit. Is that still something we're thinking of doing?
Yes, a dependent audit is happening this upcoming year. Actually, when we brought up the concept with Gallagher, they decided, EBC decided to do a system-wide audit. So it's going to be happening with all EBC cooperative school districts this upcoming year. Initially with all, all employees that are on the plan. And then moving forward, they'll do a dependency check with new individuals in the plan. And the impression I'm getting right now from EBC is that most likely, then every handful of years, they'll do a full audit. So that is happening this year, and luckily for us, it doesn't have to happen on our dime. They decided to do it system-wide.
So what about, I know we've talked about NIHIP before. NIHIP is a larger Lake County, I don't know if it's other counties, but I know for sure a large amount of districts in Lake County are NIHIP. Have we checked to see if rates are possibly lower? How feasible would it be for us to transfer over to NIHIP if that was an option?
Yeah, is that it? Yeah, just making sure you get all your questions. NIHIP is one of the other larger healthcare cooperatives, just to get everybody in the same, on the same page, between EBC, NIHIP, and what's the third one, Lakes County Cooperative? Lakes Region Cooperative? When we investigated NIHIP, the hurdle that we have with NIHIP is that they don't cus, they don't allow you to customize your plan offerings. And because the board is contractually obligated to offer a certain level of plan to our employees based on the CBA language, we would have to, if you compare that to the plan offerings that NIHIP allows you to pick from, they just have a handful of categories, we would end up increasing our offerings to go with them. We can't go down. They don't have anything currently that aligns.
What do you mean customize?
So right, the level of service that we provide with our PPO 500, 750, and our HMO, we have to keep the level of offerings consistent. We can't decrease the level of offerings.
But NIHIP does offer those.
So they probably have like a PPO 500, but what's included in that plan is different than ours. We could offer them more, but it doesn't look like there would be any type of savings available to that because we'd be increasing most likely our cost. Not having specific rates for next year, that's what it looks like. So we have the organization that's most likely going to allow us to look at comparable rates is the Lakes Region Cooperative. The hurdle that we have as, the current hurdle that we're, is most likely going to be a struggle for us with Lakes. We used to be part of Lakes, I don't know if anybody remembers that. But they require a, Chris, you might want to come up and help me. They require us to have a pot of money ready to pay for.
Right, initially, we would have to, because each district pays their claims and premiums.
Self-insured, yeah.
So we would have to pay that money upfront and build a fund balance to cover any claims that would be above average in the beginning months at least, until we establish a fund balance.
I believe, somebody can correct me on this, but I believe previously, we were a member there, and when we switched to EBC, that fund balance was given to us and then distributed to employees somehow.
Kept some of it.
We kept some of it and then distributed a chunk to employees. So we would, there's a chance that they would not, we would have to apply for acceptance and then provide an upfront fund balance to them. That's probably the biggest hurdle. Chris, tell me what other things I haven't thought, brought up that it's important to know.
Those would be the two biggest, I'm, I mean, to be approved by the co-op for membership, and then paying those premiums and claims upfront. Those would be the big things.
We are still waiting for some other options directly from some providers like Blue Cross Blue Shield and a couple other providers.
Right, yeah, I see.
Directly.
That she would get those.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Martinez?
I would, yes, if you're saying that NIHIP is not, that we are not able to customize through NIHIP, yes, you've answered my question.
That's what Gallagher is telling us right now, yeah. So we will, I'm getting kind of the informal, it looks like nod that when we present offerings, we should go ahead and continue working through a high-deductible plan and present that to the board with probably considerable contribution for first-time enrollees in the plan.
Correct.
Do our employees have a Flex card?
Yes, we do offer Flex spending accounts for all of our employees. The calendar year for that is, it's a, it's a calendar year, it's not a fiscal year, so employees can enroll starting in January every year. Cool, that's helpful, I appreciate that.
One last thing, as we're talking about healthcare costs and a way to manage them. I don't know if we've ever considered including in our plans. I don't know if we're allowed to with the union, to have a spousal carve-out in insurance, which is becoming more and more common. Meaning that if your spouse has offered insurance at their place of employment, they have to take it there. It's completely allowed, and it's becoming more and more common.
Yeah, I will bring that up with the Health Insurance Committee.
Usually the pushback you get is the spouse or the family members will say, "But our insurance here is better, and that's why we want to stay here." And the typical response is, "Then you need to talk to your own employer to improve your insurance there."
But a lot of people have, you can have insurance with your husband and say, like a dual, like a primary and secondary insurance.
And this is saying you can't. So if I have insurance at work, my wife has insurance in her work, and we have a spousal carve-out, she has to take insurance at her work. There's no secondary.
We almost have a carve-out already because we don't have that many people in the family plan anyway.
Right.
Because they have to pay so much for their spouse to be on the plan, that most of them are getting it somewhere else.
Which would make it a good time to institute something like that, where there's not that many people on the plan. So it's already in place before the families grow.
Yeah, I'll talk to the Insurance Committee about that, get back with the board. I'll also just provide updated numbers on who, how many people are on the different plans. It's probably just good to know as an update, too. Anything else? Super helpful, thank you for the conversation.
Onto the workshop. So the other week, the board had Laura Martinez coming from ISB and give a board self-evaluation workshop. And I know we were all copying on a letter that she sent out. And I'm not going to reread the letter, but I'd challenge us all to go through the letter. Because like any self-evaluation, she had a lot of follow-up action items. I think the pressure's on us now to make sure that we follow up on all these things. I have the letter in front of me, and actually, if I look at this, I think we're already working on a few of these already, so it's not that scary. I'll give a shout out to the student service, or the, yeah, the Student Service Department report. They actually ended their presentation by wrapping up and saying, "How's this report connect to the strategic plan?" And that's one of the things we came up in our evaluations, we want to hear more things. How does it relate to the strategic plan? When we have the committees of the whole, we said we're going to reevaluate, make sure they're still working. I think they're working. It can be fine-tuned. But maybe within those reports, every, every time or every other time, we talk about, what are we working on, and how does that relate to the strategic plan?
Just pull it together.
Pull it together, so there's always a focus on what our strategic plan is. Let's incorporate the KPIs in there, let's incorporate the conversation in there. So I think that'd be a great idea. The one thing they talked about was reviewing our board agreements and revise as necessary. My thought is that should be a living document. I mean, we haven't looked at it in a long time, it should be a living document. Susan's already agreed to take that document and revise it. And yes, we already thought that John would help out on that. So that way, we've got a newer board member, who might not be as familiar with why we do things, with somebody who's been on the board for more than a couple of years, who's got some good experience on why we do it that way. So that's another thing that we're taking advantage of. One of our other steps that we were challenged with is how to create a more diverse board. That was brought up in some of the comments, and John, again, had the comment that, you know what? We can start working on that now, we've got elections coming up. We know John's not running again, let's start looking for-
You just kind of made that official by voicing that.
No, I didn't.
No, I'm just teasing you.
I can change my mind anytime.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, elections are up.
I don't want to hear that.
Yeah, I know, neither do I. But we should always be thinking who else, who is out there. So yeah, that wasn't an official announcement, but so. So those are the things that came out of the evaluation, and I think we need to keep talking about that, and we will. And if there's any other thoughts or comments?
Susan and I are already in-
So you'll have it finalized by next meeting then, right?
I was thinking by September.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Okay. Onto action items. Dr. Keeley, something about the FBLA trip?
We don't have anything to add here unless you guys have questions.
Do you not have any questions? Not, I move to approve the Future Business Leaders of America trip to Orlando, Florida from June 27, 24 to July 3, 2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up is approval of the required reading list. I'm going to assume Mr. Giacaris is not going to read to us the whole list of everything that's on there?
Correct, unless you have questions for us.
Okay, do we have any questions for him?
I'm going to make my yearly comment of, if we were supposed to read all these books to properly give our approval, then you're sadly under the wrong belief. But so, I, so my yearly comment is I trust in our professionals to choose the proper texts for our kids because I'm not sure I know much about this entire list here.
The change, there's only a handful of small changes that are just really reflections of tweaks in the curriculum, things like that. But our, our, most of these come out of our English department with an eye towards making sure that we're having anchor texts that our students can relate to that reflect a variety of backgrounds and perspectives.
impressed with the Odyssey.
They're forever.
Was that current events at some point?
Yeah, current events, right.
There's no other questions. I move to approve the required reading list for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Carlson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up is the first and final reading of Policy 820. Any, go ahead.
I don't know if you want me to just give some of the highlights of the changes?
You're always welcome to.
Okay. So a few of the changes that we're making to the guidelines. The cancellation section under facility use guidelines. We are changing that so it pertains to all group rentals. We do have some government organizations and non-pro, well, I think nonprofits we charge, but some of the government organizations we do not charge. But we did have an incident recently that they canceled like five minutes before, and there was setup involved with our custodians and stuff. So we've changed the policy that all groups will, if they don't notify us within 24 hours, we will give them a cancellation charge. And then going on to-
How much is the cancellation charge?
Well, it's 25% of the rental charge, if they pay a rental charge, or 25% of the Class III hourly rate, which is about $38.75. So it's not a big hit, but just to, just to make people a little more cognizant to notify us if they're going to cancel an event. Under the facility use categories, we increased most of the fees for Class II and Class III. They are basically going up $5 to $10. And then under custodial maintenance, security, technology, staff fees, we have changed the time from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM because our custodians, our maintenance and custodians only work till 8:30, and by having them, the groups being there till 10 o'clock, we were paying overtime. So we have changed those times. And then we have changed the rate for the custodian, maintenance, security, and technology staff. Those are the changes that we've made.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Not, I move to approve the first and final reading of Board Policy 8.20, Community Use of School Facilities at D121, and Facility Rental Fees per Administrative Procedures 820 AP as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up, we're looking for approval to move some fees over from one place to another. Any questions on this?
Over there, over there.
Yeah, pretty standard. I move to approve the resolution authorizing permanent inter-fund transfer for capital project purposes in the amount of $4 million.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Last up is an approval to- Last up is an approval to get some bus leases. Any questions? If not, I move to approve a three-year bus lease for four 14-passenger buses, 15 32-passenger buses, and nine 21-plus-one passenger with Lyft buses with Midwest Transit Equipment to transport special education students as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes. Motion carries.
That's everything on the agenda. I move to.
Were we going to talk about graduation rates today? Was that, we don't have to. I'm just asking if we were supposed to. We can do it the next meeting. I don't care.
Yeah, I do have graduation rates and data. It's in the superintendent report. We definitely can talk about that some more. If you'd like to.
So.
Talking about the credits.
Correct. The credits.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. We kind of went quickly beyond the superintendent's report, but that does deserve some time.
So I looked at the numbers. I think the most interesting thing is that the non-graduation rate stayed the same. If you look at the percentage. Because the people who are below the graduation line stayed at 2% or 3%.
Yeah.
But the people that fell below the old graduation line increased. So those people, I mean, data has a lot of edges to it, but you could, you theoretically could look at that and think, well, if you'd held those, those students more accountable to a higher standard, they might have gone ahead and done that. At least, generically speaking, that's what the numbers are kind of saying.
Yes, I think that's the right question to be asking.
I don't, I'm not saying that's the right thing, but there's a lot of people that were just, that are below the old line. Using it some kind of way to me.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be what I would expect, I guess.
I think, I think part of what you're seeing is that the, this is gospel according to Westman. So again, I'm not sure. But part of what you're seeing is that the district has done a pretty consistent job over the years, regardless of where the credits are, at identifying who's not going to graduate and how do we wrap around those students. And their needs are changing in the last three years, based on, you know, previously. But we're still figuring out, how do we wrap around the students and get them the support they need? I think what you're seeing is that before the graduation change, there were probably two, I would say, two buckets of hurdles for students. The first bucket is, is the student passing required core classes. So math, English, science, social studies. You know, PE, there's a handful of those really specific graduation requirements. That's the first bucket. And then the second bucket is the electives. Are they passing the electives? And there's a general elective budget, bucket of requirements. So the first category is, are they passing the core? And then the second group is, are they passing elective classes? When we changed graduation requirements, we did not impact the core requirements. We just, for all intents and purposes, said students have to pass less electives. So we're probably not seeing kids have hurdles in that elective group now. And students are mostly not graduating on time because they, they're not passing one or more of those core classes.
It's the same number.
It's the same number, yeah.
So another question. What happens with the students that say their senior year needs three credits or two, whatever? They don't take that many classes. They got three classes instead of seven. Do they put them all in the beginning of the year, then they leave? Or they just get all study halls? I just, I just don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, maybe Dr. Keeley can come up and help. There are some students that don't take a full course, don't fill up their day with courses, and they have to go through an approval process for that. Mr. or Dr. Keeley can help us understand that a little bit better.
You'll have some kids at the Almond Campus that'll leave after fifth or sixth because they're not filling out their schedule. Most of those kids, I can't even say, probably 50% of them are athletes that are going home, eating, doing some homework, and then coming back for practice. But you do have kids that are leaving. I would, I think we ran the number. Was it around 140 kids?
We should probably run the number again for second semester, but.
Be more specific, yes.
Yeah. I just be, I mean, I'm fine if they leave. I'm not, I'm saying that, because, you know, the thing that Mr. Karasak said about summer school and stuff like this is, the most important thing we give these kids isn't a test score, it's a diploma. So I, you know, I want to make sure we do whatever gets the most diplomas in the hands of students that deserve them. And we help them get there. And I don't, I really thought this would be, there'd be fewer people below the line. It's just, and it could be an anomaly. I mean, you know, it could flip over and be different at some point in the future, but.
I thought there would be fewer people, that second red line?
Yeah, but I thought the number below the red line would, would go down. Because we lowered the requirement, but it stayed right around 2% or 3%.
Right.
The below the, it says blue line, but it's a red line.
Sorry, yeah, I wrote blue and then I put red on red line, sorry.
I knew what you meant.
So that's why I think it's, it's.
Or kids will meet expectations wherever we set them. So there's another way of looking at this, is you have, wherever we set the bar, our kids will meet that challenge. Or they require a greater level of support to meet the challenge, but it could just be down, it could be that as well. I, you know, we've heard comments about like, we just feel it should be more credits or. And I feel like there's some context, like in the next couple of years, based on what we've been seeing at this board meeting, these board meetings, about the new pathway requirements and other requirements that are coming our way. And just waiting a year or two might give us some flexibility to implement things that possibly other schools and school districts might have to look at removing in order to add. We're in a unique position where we, right now, are enjoying that flexibility, and it would give us an additional year of data. Yeah. So that, I'm going to throw that, my two cents in that of, maybe we delay any decisions a year or two to see what, how our new, everything we've been hearing gets rolled out in the next couple of years.
Maybe it's, just the improved services will bring people up above the line. Dude, that mean, you know.
We're adding staff and we're putting things, again, I say we, it's all the hard work of all the people that work here. But they, to see what that reaps, like in the next couple of years, that might lead to some interesting information as well. Like all these other services that we're putting in place, by itself should increase graduation rates as well. I'm glad you brought this up to talk about because it was on my mind as well. I'm not sure we actually have a decision point, but I'm assuming.
Start with a freshman class, right? You can't, you can't change it for anybody that's already here, correct?
You shouldn't probably change it for anyone here. I think this is the right thing to be doing, is continuing to learn. Your decision points are probably in any given year when you approve the course guides. You'd want to make a change then at that point for the incoming freshmen. The things that I'm hearing would be good for continued learning are second semester enrollment rates. And let's find out how many students are here, how long are they here for? And I'm also hearing maybe some future-looking, what are other schools considering with state requirements? What other state requirements are coming?
That, that's, is what's coming down the road that we are having to implement or wish to implement. It doesn't have to be a requirement. It could be a wish. We're uniquely positioned where we could add some stuff in there. And at this point, because we did what we did, aren't having to make tough decisions. So, yeah, I guess I'm not a fan of raising the credit requirement for the sake of raising a credit requirement. There has to be some level of reason, rationale justification. And I'm not sure I know enough to know what those things are, but yes, it was more the latter of what you said.
I don't think this is ever totally going to be temporary. I know that's been a conversation that, when this was originally passed, we, you know, to know for sure, we'd have to go back and look at the motions and stuff that were made. But, I mean, it might have been a conversation around, well, we'll see how it goes and, you know, blah, blah, blah. But we didn't make a commitment at the time we voted on it to repeal it after two or three years, once the COVID thing was passed. At least, I don't remember it that way.
It's probably a good idea, or one thing the board could consider is deciding, hey, do we want to keep talking about this on a regular basis as a full board? Do we want to have an ad hoc group that's looking at this alongside staff? Do we want to use Curriculum Committee to talk about it over the coming months, a combination of those?
We're too late for next year already, right?
No, you could at any time change graduation requirements still for the incoming class. It's probably, I would recommend you wait, but you could go until July 1st, yeah.
Information, yeah, but.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in doing it next year at all.
If I planned more out in the future, like my daughter, eighth-grade daughter, will be here next year. Like we already selected courses. And yes, we have the alternates in there. But maybe somebody with a longer-term vision may have chose differently if they knew. Yeah, so it's like we've passed the mark of eighth graders doing course selection, which may impact that decision.
I'll keep bringing stuff back to the full board. That might be something to consider is having an ad hoc group at some point and look at this in more depth so we can have deeper conversations around it.
Anything else, any other topics?
Sorry, no.
If that's the case, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Be safe.
Go see if it's 30 degrees outside.